This conference will now be recorded.
I love you, Bob. You've made my day. I got some.
Well, I would make that a word.
That's what I'm supposed to do.
Okay, is Roger here?
I don't know.
First and third on.
Oh, these are, okay, okay. Can I come over here to support you? Assistant Secretary Minister.
Wait a minute, you have that tablet.
Hmm?
You don't have a tablet.
What about?
Sounds like you're calling.
What's that?
What's that? Do you mind? Do you mind?
No, I don't mind.
Do you mind?
So would we be in row five if you get to do this?
What?
There's all three of us. There's a hundred seventy-three thousand.
Five, he's not more than it. She was.
Okay. Ready to roll? Ladies and gentlemen, I, the Honorable Mayor Andrew Dawson, hereby call to order this meeting of the Sedalia City Council on the second day of January, part of the 2023-2024 session. Let us proceed with purpose and dedication to values that guide our great city. This meeting is now called to order. The first item on our agenda is prayer followed by a pledge of allegiance. Councilwoman Bogus, uh, council, yes, Councilwoman Bogus, I got you right. You have the floor to lead us through our prayer and pledge of allegiance.
As a bear, as we bow our heads tonight, we come to the grace of God and say thank you for all that you have shown upon us. Father, we ask that you continue to bless us, lead us, and guide us. As we go through our meeting tonight, we ask that you be in the lead of everything that we do for the goodness of our citizens here in Sedalia. We ask special blessing upon our service awards and say thank you to the Amish world. In the name of Jesus, I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Here.
Marshall is absent. Bogus.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Cross.
Here.
Foster.
Here.
And Bliss is absent.
Okay. First item on our agenda is special awards. And ladies and gentlemen, tonight marks a special moment as we celebrate the dazzling displays of 2023's Sedalia Christmas Light Contest. Your creativity and spirit showcased by our residents have truly made this holiday season one to remember. Firstly, I'm delighted to announce that our first place award goes to Roger and A.J. Davis of 1612 West Ford. Roger and A.J., would you please come to the podium? And Assistant Administrator Ward has your award there. Their home has become a hallmark for our community's Christmas spirit with handcrafted decorations that bring wonder and joy to all those who see them. Thank you. Uh, in second place, we congratulate Kevin Walker of 700 West Broadway Boulevard. His display with its vibrant red lights and the touch of historical significance is added a unique charm to our city's holiday landscape. And in third place, it is my pleasure to recognize Linda Meek of 1908 East Broadway Boulevard. Linda, please join us up at the podium. Uh, your dedication to creating a festive wonderland at your home year after year has been a gift to our community, spreading cheer and warmth. To Roger, A.J., Kevin, and Linda, thank you for your extraordinary efforts in making Sedalia shine brightly this holiday season. Your displays are not just lights and decorations. They are expressions of your love for our community and the joy spirit of the season. On behalf of the Sedalia City Council and all of our residents, we send our heartfelt congratulations and gratitude to you. If I could get everybody up here in front of the podium, we'll give you a big round of applause here. Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in a round of applause to honor these outstanding contributions. All right. Next item is approval of the previous session's minutes dated December 18th, 2023. Do I have a motion in a second?
Approved. Thank you, Senator.
Any discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Minutes are approved. Uh, let's see. Now we have the roll call of our standing committees. Now first, we have Finance Administration. Vice Chairman Robinson, you have the floor.
Thank you. As part of our strategic planning process, we ask that our outside service contractors make a presentation. The contract requires such presentation, and essentially, we ask that they report on how the funds were used this fiscal year, and then what services and costs they propose for the next fiscal year. For this meeting, Jessica Craig will make such reports of the contract with the Sedalia-Pettus County Economic Development. The city currently provides $140,000 of funding per year for these functions.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here tonight. Um, can you believe this is my eighth year coming before the council for this great presentation? Um, I think time flies when you're having fun. Please feel free to ask me any questions as I go along or at the end. I want to say first, thank you, by, for being an important part of the economic development team here in Sedalia and Pettis County, both financially for your support throughout the year as we grow the local economy. So in recent years, we have worked successfully with businesses to grow our local economy in a lot of ways, um, both expanding existing facilities and building new facilities, resulting in 1,028 new jobs to our local economy, 1,698 just shy of 1,700 retained jobs. You'll often hear me refer to those retained jobs as being probably the most important part of our economy. You can't grow your economy unless you're taking care of what's already here. We focus a lot on that. $418 million new capital investments with an average salary of $46,674,000. And so we are continuing to grow that local base year over year over year. We are really proud of the existing businesses that call Sedalia and Pettis County home. Uh, as you can see from this slide, the diversity of products made here in Sedalia is profound, and that allows us to weather economic downturns really well because of the diversity of products from toolboxes to wheels to rebar to ammunition, chicken nuggets, and everything in between. And I think it's really great for us to celebrate the diversity of those products manufactured here. I want tonight to highlight some successes from 2023 that we're continuing to build upon in 2024. Um, we were excited to celebrate Prismian Group's $45.5 million expansion with Governor Parsons at their beam signing ceremony. I've been doing this for, I'll date myself, 18, 19 years, and I've never participated in a beam signing ceremony. And as you can see there on the left, that blue beam, um, everyone in attendance was able to sign that beam to commemorate this major expansion. That beam will be predominantly displayed in their expanded facility consisting of 115,000 square feet, um, new square feet, and the creation of 60 new jobs in addition to retaining 215 existing employees. In addition to Governor Parsons, we were joined by Prismian's Leadership Group from all over the world. They were incredibly impressed by the community's support for the growing business here. And just to put in perspective, Prismian has 29,000 employees around the globe. They operate in 50 counties and 108 manufacturing plants. So that expansion literally could have happened anywhere. And in 2023, we also commemorated Simco's start of construction for their new 67,000-square-foot facility on Seer Drive. This $18 million project will create 35 new jobs, and it's well on its way to officially launching. They've started hiring their local leadership team here and look forward to an official launch in 2024 once the building is complete. We were excited to break out the golden shovels for Impact Science Groundbreaking Ceremony on a new $8 million facility and expanded headquarters and also manufacturing facility in Thompson Meadows Industrial Park. You can see the dust flying from that groundbreaking ceremony. Um, this has been a really exciting economic development project for us. Um, it will anchor the northwest corner of the Thompson Meadows Industrial Park in a site that has been undeveloped for over 20 years. So we're very excited to see that development happen and work with a homegrown company to continue to grow. Some, a project that we did not announce officially in 2023, I guess you could, uh, call this the project announcement. We, um, I started working with Allen Industries in late 2022 and throughout 2023. Um, they make those large fiberglass tanks you see on the right-hand side of your screen. Um, they had the need to expand and double capacity from a production standpoint because of their customers' growth needs. Um, they have been located in southern Pettis County on Wingate Drive. So kind of out of place, out of mind. And I worked with them to expand into the large 96,000-square-foot warehouse at North 65 Highway and Grant. Um, and they've really taken it from a warehouse and transformed it to a Stanley Art Manufacturing Complex. They do plan to not only retain the 48 existing jobs they have, but also grow and add 48 new jobs. So we're, we are excited to work with them to continue to grow their business here in Sedalia and Pettis County. A lot of times we talk about how excited we are to recruit a new business to the community. Um, a commitment that economic development has is to make sure we're taking care of our own businesses and to make sure the existing businesses have a way to sustain here and continue to grow here. As a part of our business retention program, I sit down with our business leaders on a regular basis to understand what keeps them awake at night, what is going well with the business, how can we at Economic Development help them grow here. When recently meeting with Precision Manufacturing, the owner indicated he wanted to retire and find a buyer for the business here in Sedalia. And in, in my line of work, that's kind of a red flag because that could mean that company going out of business ultimately. In 2023, I successfully worked with Precision Manufacturing and Trial Manufacturing on acquisition and merger to accomplish just that, keeping the business here and growing it. Trial Manufacturing is also a family-owned Missouri-based business out of Ozark, Missouri. They manufacture agriculture-related items you see on the screen. There you go. Thank you. You're in my mind. Um, on the left-hand, or on the screen there. Um, these ag-related products are very complimentary to the ag-related attachments that Precision Manufacturing has made here for many years. Late in 2023, Trial Manufacturing officially purchased Precision Manufacturing and plans to grow the business right here in Sedalia. They are located at 800 Market Street at 65 and Grant in Sedalia. It's actually right in the backyard of Allen Industries. There are a lot of people that go into building a foundation for economic development over the last 50 years. Um, we are really excited to support and acknowledge those that have been pivotal in our community's growth. We were honored to present Mr. David Curry with the first-ever Pioneer Economic Development Award in April 2023 during our Works For You banquet. You can see the picture there on the right with his wife, Emma. David graciously supported and led economic development as a member of our Board of Directors for 50 years, and not many people can say that they've done just that. In October, during our Manufacturers Milestone banquet, we celebrated 23 businesses here with five-year milestone anniversaries, whether they were here for five years or 90 years, acknowledging the contributions they make to our local economy. And each month, to highlight our entrepreneurs and our small business thing, we host the One Million Cups Program um, at State Fair Community College. It's the first Wednesday of every month at 9:00 a.m. open to the public. In 2023, we highlighted 19 businesses, entrepreneurs, and small businesses here. So that's all exciting. We're also continually building our pipeline. Sometimes projects that we're working on can take two years, three years to come to fruition. In 2023, we facilitated 19 business retention and expansion meetings. That's me sitting down with that plan manager, that CEO, to understand their business needs. We responded to 21 requests for proposals for businesses seeking new locations, and we led 10 in-person and virtual site visits for prospective new businesses that don't currently have a facility here. So where are we going from here? Um, in 2024, we are meeting change and what I like to call opportunity head-on. As you know, we've been located in the U.S. Bank Building on West 50 Highway for 35 years. And at the latter part of 2023, we packed all of our wonderful things up and moved to wonderful downtown Sedalia. So we're excited to be part of the downtown historic corridor. Uh, we are located in the wonderful Lamy's Building on the second floor, Suite 203. We're settling in. I can't tell you I've unboxed every box yet, but we're getting there. Um, and we are going to add a teammate to the economic development team. Sidney Cadmus, who was with our organization for many years, um, found a wonderful career opportunity outside of economic development. So our economic development specialist position is currently available, and we are recruiting for that position. We have a really strong pipeline headed into 2024. During our election year, you never know what businesses are going to do. And I'm excited to say that we have a very strong pipeline. So I want you to stay tuned because some exciting things coming in 2024. Including, we're going to have an open house for Allen Industries at their expanded location. We're also planning to have an open house for Trial Manufacturing at their new location, Precision Manufacturing here, to not only introduce the community to them, but to also introduce them to the community. They want to become a great community partner. And we do have three pending project announcements planned. So that in a nutshell gives you a snapshot of where we've been through 2023, where we're headed for 2024. I want to thank you for being a great member of the economic development team again. You've heard me say it takes a village to do what we do. We don't do this in a vacuum. We're just an organization with two full-time employees and a lot of wonderful board of directors, but it really does take a village. You can see from the mayor and all of the partners involved. Kelvin, as our city administrator, we work really closely with the city and all of our partners, and we could not do this in a vacuum or alone. So thank you for being pro-business and pro-development in a great community. And with that, I'd love to answer any questions on behalf of economic development and where we're headed.
Does Council have any questions?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you.
As with the previous presentation, John Simmons, Community Development Director, will provide the annual report for the Scott Joplin International Ragtime Foundation as he has also served as president of that organization. The city currently provides $10,000 of funding per year for this event.
Thank you, Councilman Robinson, and good evening. And I stand before you tonight, not as an employee, but as the board president for the Scott Joplin International Ragtime Foundation. Um, this is a special year for the foundation. I'll explain that in just a moment. But as you can see from the slide, our board is comprised of Sedalians that are committed to making this work every year. These are some new, some new members on the board, but we've got a lot of long-term knowledge sitting on that board. Um, you'll also notice the artistic and education directors are not recognizable names, but those are professionals in the field and are located in Texas and Connecticut, I believe, as well as Washington, D.C. So they, they are that communication link to our performers. So it's very important to have them on the board to let us know what those, those people are thinking and what they need from us as a board. Um, as you've heard in the past, our mission is to preserve and promote an understanding and appreciation of ragtime music. But really ragtime music as it relates to Sedalia, Missouri. That's the key to this one. Our core production every year is the, is the annual Ragtime Festival. And again, I keep mentioning this is, this is going to be a special year, and I'll tell you more about that in a moment. It's also the largest festival of its kind, and this is seen among those performers as the ragtime reunion. They come here at a discount. They do not charge their normal fees as musicians to come to Sedalia. They want to be in Sedalia. They want to soak up the history, and they want to walk the streets that Scott Joplin walked. So we're very lucky in that regard. Our objectives. Our to manage our business according to generally accepted guidelines for not-for-profit organizations. Uh, our policies reflect current practice and are implemented with accountability. We have a strong volunteer leadership representing the local community, and those volunteer leaders fulfill assigned liaison positions. So somebody's in charge of venues. Somebody's in charge of hospitality. Somebody's in charge of transportation. So each one of those board members has a job, and they work hard every year. Last year, in 2023, we had four days of music, 30-plus musicians, two open-air venues, uh, the 10 down at the Pettis County Courthouse, as well as for Nell Pavilion. We have five new pianos, and that's important here. This year, we, instead of renting our pianos, we, we went out and purchased the asset. Uh, we decided that rentals, we could get more out of it, owning the piano than renting for the same price. So we scrambled last year and got five new pianos. And since then, I think we've added three more. Uh, we introduced a dinner concert, Concert of Number Five Bistro, on Friday nights that went over very well. So we're probably going to do two of those this year. The Katie Depot is also a free venue. We have seven education, or nine education opportunities at Liberty Center, as well as the seven concerts. You get to interact with the musicians. And again, it's that ragtime reunion. This is the 50th anniversary of the festival in Sedalia, Missouri. So this year, we're going to be bringing in more musicians. Uh, we're adding that extra dinner concert. There's going to be new events. We're reintroducing the Ragtime Dance. Uh, so the board's been working really hard and crunching those numbers. We, we were also blessed this year with a donor from Georgia who basically financed those pianos. And since he financed those pianos, he's given to our foundation two more times substantial sums of money. So the festival is becoming very well positioned to continue our mission. Want to show the impact on Sedalia this, this past year. We attracted people from 26 states, and that should say one foreign country. We were four the previous year. I did not correct that slide. We sold 947 tickets. Last, the year before, we were at 633. And if you remember the year before, that was coming out of COVID. The pandemic really hit us hard as far as the festival. We, we had to skip two years, and then we were worried about how do we get the crowd back? That 2022 was a little bit light, but 2023 saw us returning to our normal numbers. So based on that and extrapolating the numbers, we see 89,700, uh, in overnight visitors, and that's just on the accommodations alone. The daytime tourism expenditures, Bruton Missalany, was 21,000. And then the event revenue, uh, was 51,258. So it had a total direct economic impact in the community of 162,000. And you'll see in 2022, that total was 98,058. So, uh, we hope to see continued improvement, especially with the 50th anniversary. So here's where everybody came from this year. Uh, we might have some others in there that snuck in, and we didn't get what state they were from. And we also had our returning doctor and his family that came back from Brazil. They're, they seem to come about every two years. So the city participation, again, we didn't have support in 2021 since we didn't have a festival. We saw the return in 2022 and continued support in 2023. You support us with $10,000 in, in hard funds, but you also provide us with staff assistance getting the festival ready, cleaning the streets, getting the venues ready. We use the Public Works as well as the Building Maintenance Group to assist us with that. They do an outstanding job. And when we use them on the weekends, we pay them from the foundation. It's not overtime. It's not on city's books, but we, we, we pay them for their work. Um, the business community contributes over 10,000 sponsorships. The Missouri Arts Council provides an annual grant of 15,413. Previous year, it was $5,000 less. And then the tourism marketing grant from the CBB group brings us 33,620 for marketing to bring in overnight reserves, um, as well as the other service clubs in the community that we, we call on to assist with, with seating, et cetera. So our vision for the future remains the same as has for the past few years. We want to continue to build those impending numbers. We want to revamp how we use for Nell Pavilion. Each year we use it, we learn something new about how to better bring that to the public. Uh, we will continue syncopated Saturday nights, which were introduced when we couldn't have audiences, and then continue to educate younger generations and increase the awareness of our location and importance in American music. So thank you for your support. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. And please remember that this is the 50th anniversary. I should have made a huge slide about this. That's important. But, uh, we'll be, we'll be introducing the lineups and who's coming, and really want to get that community support going this year. Thank you all.
Council, have any questions?
Can you give us the dates again?
Oh, that will be the first full weekend in June, and I don't have my calendar, and I haven't committed it to memory. But I believe it covers that Memorial Day weekend. Is it first, second, or fifth of June? So it'll be May 30th through June 2nd. Yep. Thanks, Robinson.
Anything further, Council?
Thank you all.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John. The city participates in multi-jurisdictional local hazard mitigation planning efforts. These efforts are in recognition of the threat of potential natural hazards that could affect the community. Through our cooperative contract with Pettis County, Fisher-Ruda, BMDA director, brings the necessary individuals together to reduce such threats and pulls together a plan to mitigate the effects of such hazard. Participation in this process maintains the city's eligibility for grants and other assistance that would otherwise not be available. Staff recommends formal adoption of the updated plan.
Call for the reading of the resolution adopting the 2024 Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Resolution 2077. The resolution of the city of Sedalia adopting the 2024 Pettis County Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Most approved?
Aye.
Any council discussion regarding the approval of the hazard mitigation plan? Having heard none, all those in favor? All those opposed? All right. Motion passes and plan is adopted. Thank you, Chairman Robinson. Up next, we have Public Works. Chairman Oldham, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. As we are nearing the end of our strategic planning presentation, these all lead up to our January 6th Strategic Planning Workshop, which is happening this Saturday, which means we are on our final strategic planning presentation. So why not save the best for last?
Thanks.
For the lady who brings the fun and the excitement to our community.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Um, so I talk about it every year, but I like to stress, um, for the Parks Department, it is our mission to provide programs, facilities, and services that will enhance the quality of life for all Sedalian citizens. Um, I can't say it enough, having Hecarri Communities there has really helped us to be able to make sure that we're providing the fund and enhancing the quality of life of our citizens all year round. I've always thought that we've done a great job, you know, from April to October, um, and then the best that we could. Those colder months. But now that we have the Hecarri, we really, um, we have no limits on what we can do. And, uh, when I talk about some of the numbers and stuff, you'll see how much it's being used. Uh, I just want to kind of hit ten of our top achievements. Uh, this is one thing we work as a staff to kind of discuss, you know, what are we proud of? What do we think our citizens are proud of? Um, it's hard. We were, we were about like at thirty and we were trying to get it down to ten. There's maybe some competition amongst our staff and try to narrow it down. But these are the kind of the ten that we looked at, just kind of as a whole, making sure we're staying well-rounded in the community. Um, but the Ward of Liberty Park Stadium Grant, that's a huge one. Um, thanks to the help and support of the city and John Simmons for us to be able to get that. Um, that project will be completed later on in the fall. Expansion of Liberty Lights, hopefully all of you were able to drive through Liberty Park and really see how much we've expanded on that. Um, we've been meeting, we originally had a ten, ten-year master plan for light-up liberty. We have now extended it to fifteen years, um, just knowing more of what we can do. Um, and that, again, is one thing that the community, um, we get sponsorships for those different lights. We added over twenty lights this year. And those are because of sponsorship of, um, organizations, businesses, and even individuals who said, hey, you know, I would like to do something in memory of a loved one, what can we do? And we try to work with them on, okay, buying this and then giving a donation every year to help offset the lights. They are LEDs, so that does help us. Um, one thing, why I'm just kind of talking about that, everyone always asks why we keep the lights on? And I like to stress that in case you guys ever, ever asked that. Um, but there's numerous reasons. Um, one is safety. Um, the police department, our security, um, the first year we did it, we were shutting them off every night with a timer. And we weren't having vandalism. And so, we talked to other parks departments and stuff, they said, keep them on and it'll make a huge difference. And it really, knock on wood, has, we haven't had any issues. Um, they are LED. And then also the companies tell us because they sit on the ground, the moisture builds up in there when it gets cold. Um, so, we have less repairs as well. So, for the cost, it was much cheaper for us to keep them on. So, that is one reason in case you guys are ever asked on that. Um, our next thing is expansion of Liberty Lights. Sorry, just talked about that. Um, Liberty Stadium improvements completion. I skipped this, I'm sorry. Think I'm already going on to the next phase. Um, phase one to LED lights and talked about just the difference that has done in, um, light-up liberty. Um, that is something that we're doing in all of the parks, is trying to phase out all the lights and move to LED lights. Um, as you guys know, there's a nice cost that comes along with that, especially when you're talking about tennis courts, like soccer, ball fields. Um, but this year, we were able to start with dance field and the tennis courts. Um, and then we will continue, but we have a six phases that we will go. Um, Cloverdale's going to be our most expensive to be able to make those improvements. Um, Hecar Community Center numbers. Uh, we continue to exceed on the numbers of participations, number of memberships. Right now, we're a little over seven thousand members. Um, when I talk about that, the one thing is membership. If you have Silver Sneakers or Active Net or anything like that, that counts as a member, as being a member. But part of those memberships, we do only get reimbursed if they're actually coming and using the facility. Um, but we continue to exceed, especially in that sixteen over. That's the one area that we were not right on the numbers. Um, but we are much higher than what we expected, so that's what we want to see. Um, our classes are continuing to have to, um, grow and add more additional equipment. Um, we're getting to the part now where we're starting to talk that, hey, we need to add another class at nine o'clock because we have forty-one in the aerobic class and we have thirty-seven in this one in the gym. Um, we're going to have to move another one onto another court just because we don't want to have to tell people no when they show up for a class. So, it's been a good addition to do. Um, in-house projects, I can't say enough about our maintenance team. They do a really good job. They are maintenance staff because they should be there to maintain. But they do a lot of construction to help us be able to offset costs. So, just some bridge repairs and different things that they've done that's really helped us on our budget to do different things. Art in the park is an addition that we continue to add. Um, staff addition, we're at a little over than a hundred and seventy-five employees right now. Um, and again, that's because our numbers continue to grow with participation in programs and activities as well. So, um, especially that teen population, we have a lot of teens that work for us. So, it's a lot of their first jobs, stepping stones. So, we're doing more than giving them a job, but teaching them, um, a valuable lesson as well. We added over twenty new programs. We planted over a hundred trees throughout the park system. And then again, our program participation, it's nice when we have to add two princess parties. Um, you know, two breakfast with Santa times to come because they're growing and people want to come and they want to participate, um, and make those memories with their families. So, it's good for us to see that we're continuing to grow. So, where are we going in twenty-four, twenty-five? Um, we will be, hopefully be breaking grounds at the new aquatic facility here this summer. Liberty train will be delivered here at the end of this month. Uh, we'll have that back up and running this spring, which will be nice. And we're already planning on, um, some different events at Christmas time as well with the train. And we're just really excited to be able to gear up and, and get that moving again. Again, expansion of Liberty Lights. I spoke with Kelvin today. We have a big announcement that will come in about, um, phase five. This will be huge. Um, we're working to get a news release put together when we can announce that. But hopefully later this week or first of next week. But it'll, it'll be a big excitement for sure. Liberty Stadium Improvement Completion next, this coming fall. Um, new playground at Liberty Park will be completed here early summer, late spring. And then we'll be doing a new playground over at Katy Park as well. Uh, Liberty Park Boulevard, uh, we've talked about that, about working with the city in collaboration just to make more parking there and help with the drainage issues that we have over there. Um, corporate memberships at the Hecar Community Center, that's one thing that we're seeing a lot of businesses and organizations and stuff that are wanting a corporate membership. So, one thing is when we talk to other parks departments in the state of Missouri, I cannot find any that offer corporate memberships. And I think part of that has a lot to do with, we already keep our prices so low. Um, it's hard to give a discount. But how can we find a way? So, we're really working and talking with different organizations and businesses in town and factories in town of what we can do to help them get their employees to be healthier by coming to the community center. So, we're working on that and hope to have that out this year. Improvements to Convention Hall. A lot of people ask for, there's rumors that you're going to tear down Convention Hall. Absolutely not. Um, that was one thing that was going on here recently. I was getting phone calls on, not sure where that happened. But Convention Hall is, is booked. Um, we have football, we have dance, we have gymnastics. Um, it's very busy, almost so busy that we can't find time to be able to shut it down so that we can do some of the improvements that need to. Um, so, that's one thing that we look at doing this summer is for two weeks, it'll be completely closed that we, so we can do some remodeling and stuff inside. Maintenance, of course, would rather it be in the winter months, but that's when it's busy and we just can't get it worked out. So, some improvements at Convention Hall. I'm looking at adding a program coordinator. We, I've talked a lot about, about programs filling up, the wants and needs that we're getting from members that come to the Hecar Community Center. Um, so, we're going to be looking at adding a program coordinator position that would take over some of the programs that we already have and focus on those and then adding trips and tours, special needs and other like art classes and different things that we could offer at the Hecar Community Center as well. Um, and then I could want to hear some kind of grant facilitator or something. That's the one thing I've kind of talked to Kelvin about, about, is, um, there's so many grant opportunities out there. Um, but I think a lot of people think you just fill out a grant and then you get it and then you just spend the money. It takes a lot of work and a lot of time. And I realized that some of the grants I've done before, pretty simple, um, the Liberty Stadium Grant. It's, I feel like you're just chasing yourself half the time. I don't, I told John, I have so much sympathy for him, I don't know how he does it. Um, because you're just asking questions and just, it takes, I think, like fifty questions to get one answer and then you're back to the same question again. So, um, different things that we're looking at as well for, uh, new positions. Uh, Liberty Stadium, a lot of people ask, well, what are you guys going to be doing at the stadium with the grant? Um, the one thing I really want to stress is, towards being the whole playing facility, restrooms and concessions, heating and, and air conditioning, parking lot paid, um, drainage improvement, that'll be a huge thing. And again, something that we collaborate and work together with the city to hopefully save us some money on some of that. Um, the fan stand and seating improvement, again, it's just repairs, um, and making them safe and getting more life out of them. Dugout improvements if we can, locker rooms. And then the last thing would be like scoreboard add-on, pitch count or any improvements if we have any money left over. But you guys know how fast money goes. So, that's just kind of priority-wise of what we are looking at. Um, this is at Liberty Park Boulevard that I kind of talk about for everyone because it's Liberty Park Stadium Drive. I guess, it just right there is where we're looking at maybe adding parking going down. Kelvin and I've talked a lot about this. Um, the one thing is our largest shelter, most-used shelter is on Liberty Park Boulevard and we have the least amount of parking. Uh, we'll be adding that new playground as well. So, we really need to do something to get more parking. And then I also put up the signs so you guys could see, when I talk about the old practice field, of making parking there as well. Those are at the Hecar all the time when we're busy, even at nine o'clock, ten o'clock, she's coming in to swim. It's hard to find a parking spot. That's a good problem to have, but we need to make sure that we're trying to address it and find, um, more addition for parking spots. Especially as staff continues, when we add another program person, that's going to be taking some of the rooms that we currently aren't using during our heavy times. Um, but once we do that, then we can, we have more parking so we can, you know, when we look at things on the map and how we're scheduling and stuff, we're like, wait, we really need to hold that off because we're too busy at that time. Push it to a different time. This more parking will help us to be able to not have to worry about that issue. So, again, good problems to have. New programs with the new program person, pickleball. If you guys haven't played pickleball, you should come check it out. Um, but we've really been kicking off tournaments of pickleball. It's a good revenue generator for our community. Um, there's a lot of people in Sedalia that like to play it as well. Um, but we're working, um, with Jeff City, Columbia, and Lee Summit to be able to do some tournaments that are regional. Um, and we have the facility to be able to do that. They unfortunately don't. So, how can we get some tournaments here with pickleball? There's also been reaching out to the show-me games on how maybe Sedalia could be, we're an hour away or less, but to be another site because the show-me games are growing. Maybe that's something could start coming to Sedalia. And pickleball's the one thing that's been talked about. Special Olympics, special needs, that's one area that I feel like we don't hit as strong as we need to. So, that program position would be one that really is going to be one of their high, high areas of trying to include. We have some sensory play and different things at the Hecar that are, are well-received. And so, we know there's a need out there, but it takes the right person to be able to do that. That's one thing we want to focus on. Um, we'll be coming and talking about doing a family camp out out at Cloverdale. You have such a nice facility out there. Let's try to start hitting the outdoors and, um, more nature. Some of us take that stuff for granted because we grew up and we know that stuff. There's a lot of kids that have never been camping or anything like that before. So, how can we do that? Um, with connections with white men, with tents and different things. That's one thing that we want to be looking at doing that, um, this summer or winter. Um, we talked about this, a lot of things you'll see is kind of the same from last year. Um, but when we get that Liberty Stadium Grant, that kind of changed a little bit, focus on what we're doing. Um, but here in the next three years, um, you know, talking about the opening of the new aquatic facility, we've been talking about the dog, the dog park. It kind of keeps getting pushed back as we're doing something new. Um, but the completion of the dog park, um, all the parking and drainage improvements at Liberty Park, I know and understand that takes some time. Um, so, it's not something that's going to happen overnight in one year, but hopefully within three years, we have that. Um, the playground at Katy, um, in Vermont will be the next one that is completed after Katy. Lights replaced at soccer field, soccer field improvement plans, and then, um, a restroom out at Cloverdale. That's the one thing, if you've gone out to Cloverdale, there's a restroom there, but I wouldn't call it a restroom, but it is there. But we need to do something because that is one thing, fishing and different things have really taken off. And we want to continue to make sure we're making improvements so our citizens can enjoy there. Um, last is five years, this is kind of going a little bit further. Like getting that second splash pad out at Centennial completed, um, tearing down the facility there. Uh, sand volleyball courts out at Cloverdale, LED lights in the park, more parking at Housel. Um, we use that a lot for baseball. Again, these are things I keep saying over and over, but Sedalia's growing. I think baseball fields have been a problem for the last ten years. We need to really start kind of looking at long-term with adding more baseball fields. Um, but more parking over at Housel. Because we played, right now, we played our twelve U and thirteen U over there and there's just not enough parking over at Housel. Um, a maintenance shop, they're really going to need a larger maintenance facility. So, that's something that looking at five years, where are we going to go? What are we going to do? Um, field improvements at Hubbard, that'll be something, we're doing some, some small improvements there in the next fiscal year just with the seating and stuff, but long-term field improvements over there. And then my big goal that I've always talked about is I really, long-term, by the time I retire, I would love that every park in this town is, wherever you live, that you could walk to a park within ten minutes. So, those are long-term things in five years, like let's start looking at how we're growing. Like it would be great for us to be able to have trails or different things long-term. But I think every person that lives in Sedalia would be really nice that in ten minutes, they could walk to a park. So, that's kind of a quick overview of where we're going. Um, happy to answer any questions that anyone has about the Parks Department or the Hecar Community Center.
Counsel, have any questions for Director?
Okay. Thank you, guys.
That concludes our final strategic planning presentation, which now this Saturday will be our major workshop. And we'll have all the council and all the department heads here and Chief Irwin discussing great. So, get ready for Saturday. Next item I have tonight is while the central wastewater treatment facility is, uh, under repair and renovation, that means the belt press will be down as well. And we need to bring in the trailer-mounted belt press in, uh, so we can continue, so we can have it continuing.
All right. Call for the reading of the ordinance authorizing a rental agreement for the trailer-mounted belt press.
Bill number two thousand twenty-four dash one. An ordinance authorizing an agreement for the rental of a trailer-mounted belt press.
Second reading?
Second.
Any council discussion regarding the?
I have a question about, about the belt press. It says that, uh, uh, we have a choice of renting or to buy. Would we be ahead by fighting this?
Uh.
Mr. Richer?
Yeah, uh, yes and no. Um, the problem with purchasing, and we look very hard at purchasing one. Uh, the problem is, is it would take over a year to get a purchased one in. And, uh, that will not bring us into compliance and, and we need it running now. And, uh, and so, the, the rental, and even if you bought one, um, uh, and we are going to need a, a new replacement one, but you have to operate the plant while you tear out the old one and put the new one in. So, you're still going to have to have a rented trailer-mounted mobile one. Um, but we, again, we looked at a, at a, at purchasing a trailer-mounted one. It's going to get one in in time.
Is it possible for repairs on the rental?
Uh, I am not sure, but I believe that they, uh, they are responsible for the major repairs and we're responsible for the maintenance.
You know, I, I, well, I was thinking though, if, if we ever needed this again.
Yeah.
If it hasn't rented again.
Yes.
But it'd be setting idle for a long time.
Some of that equipment doesn't set idle well.
Yeah.
Um, but, but yeah, we looked very hard at that because we operate similar equipment at our southeast plant. And, uh, and so, the, the thought was as well, if we got this one, if we purchased one and then we could transfer it to the southeast, uh, that's going to need to be replaced at some point. But we just couldn't get it in in time.
Yeah. How much was the price on that?
Uh, a trailer, a trailer-mounted one is about a half a million dollars. We're going to, we're going to pay in rental about half the cost of purchasing one.
And on the flip side of that, it's important to get that here as soon as possible. Because we have that aeration pool that has got, was it twelve, fourteen feet of sludge, bio slug in it? And we need to get that thing down to things like six.
Uh, well, it's down to about seven now, the last I heard. Um, but it, it needs to be emptied there, uh, completely. And it was my understanding that was about, the estimate was is about three-quarters of a million dollars if we don't have that sludge out for somebody to come in and take it out and dispose of it. If we can get the belt press in, uh, and process it and make compost out of it, actually, they pay us to get rid of the compost as opposed to, and it gets rid of the, the tree branches and all that at the same time, so.
Any other council discussion? Have you heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Second reading, please.
Bill number two thousand twenty-four dash one. An ordinance authorizing an agreement for the rental of a trailer-mounted belt press.
Final passage?
Second.
Any council discussion regarding the final passage of this ordinance? Have you heard none, roll call, please?
Doggus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
And Marshall is absent, so seven yes, one absent.
And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Chairman Oldham. Up next, we have public safety. Chairman Robinson, you have the floor.
Uh, a grant related to overtime compensation policy, I guess we need an ordinance for that.
Okay. Call for the reading regarding the amendment of the overtime compensation policy.
Bill number two thousand twenty-four dash two. An ordinance amending the overtime compensation policy.
Second reading?
Second.
Any council discussion regarding this amendment? Have you heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes?
Bill number two thousand twenty-four dash two. An ordinance amending the overtime compensation policy.
Final passage?
Second.
Any council discussion regarding the final passage of this ordinance? Have you heard none, roll call, please? Hiller.
Yeah.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall is absent and Doggus.
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent. Okay. Up next, we have teen development. Chairman Foster.
Hi. No report at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, other business, let's see, we have the liquor licenses. Call for the reading of liquor licenses.
We have one renewal license tonight for Mary J. Stewart Business, that doing businesses, American Legion Post six forty-two, two thousand sixteen, West Main, for Sunday liquor sales.
Motion approved.
Second.
Any council discussion? Have you heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Liquor licenses approved. Uh, next item is Missalane's items from. Next item is miscellaneous items from city council and city administrators, does anybody have anything they'd like to discuss?
The only thing I had is, as Councilman Oldham pointed out, I'm really looking forward to the strategic planning session on the 6th, and would like to point out that it is open to the public, and it'll start about 8:00, 8:00 or 8:30 Saturday morning, and run until probably about 2:00, so.
I just want to add, Lions Club called me last week, and tomorrow, noon, I'm going to go and talk about the dare program to Lions Club, so kind of looking forward to that. Anyone else?
No. Having heard none, we now, ladies and gentlemen, we arrive at a good welfare section of our agenda, which is a unique opportunity for residents of our beloved city to directly address their city council. Before we begin, I'd like to remind everyone in the framework of this segment, each speaker is requested to step forward, clearly state their name, address, and will be allowed in three minutes to present their statement. Please note, this is not a session for dialogue debate with the council, nor is it prepared for question and answers. The time to make your voice heard for us to listen, and through your statements entered into the public record. We ask that all remarks be kept respectful and pertinent to community matters. If anybody would like to go ahead and speak, step on up.
Renee Vance, 1-9813-Tangle Nook. I am here to speak tonight to amend the request presented to council on December 18th. The Sedalia Senior Center will be celebrating their 50th year of continued service of providing healthy and nutritious meals to homebound older adults that live in our community. Mayor Jerry Jones, in June of 74, welcomed the opening of the senior center. Although the location and clients may have changed, our mission remains. We make a difference in the lives of people by providing them with opportunities to create positive aging experiences, and to help older adults remain safely at home, regain their independence, and retain their dignity. As a somewhat regular council attendee, I and staff recommend the council to sponsor the Golden 50th Year Hear Our Stories that will be presented in June of this year. The sponsorship is $2,500, as opposed to the $500 we've talked about. This will demonstrate the commitment and success of our center. I'm honored to represent the Pettus County seniors and advocate on their behalf to the local and state officials. The success is of our center is a valid and vital to this community. Also, on the second Sunday of this month, we will be having fried chicken and $12 cash credit or card. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor? How do, how do you go about voting on something like that? How do you, how do you, I think we ought to do it, you know? I think if you make such a motion, if that's the way you do it, I don't know how you...
Yeah, well, if you want to make a motion, we can go ahead and bring that back to the next council meeting.
Okay.
Maybe we'll work that into our budget if that happens.
Just be a line item budget if we can just, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I would offer, you're talking about in June, correct?
I'm, I'm talking, okay.
So that would be in next year's budget, if you all would, so, so, well, I can just put it in the budget and then make it a line item for our work session, so that would be...
So would you make that motion?
I would make that motion.
Put it in the...
I'd like to second it.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, so that is the motion to go ahead and place that line item in the budget for the work session that we're going to go ahead and proceed with, and then it'll be discussed further there. Okay, anything further?
My name's David Goodson, 1640 Hedge Apple Drive. Hey, I just, to be honest, inappropriate, but we'd be happy to donate $500 to the senior center for the program and help you out with that, so didn't know how to approach that, but just how we need to do that, just let us know.
Thank you very much, Mr. Goodson. Anyone else? All right, having heard none, we do not have a closed-door meeting this evening, so I will entertain a motion, a second to adjourn the meeting.
Motion approved.
Any council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
I sensed a disappointment.
Under an hour, guys, we haven't done that in how long? When's the last time we did something under an hour? Just a little bit. A little. A little.